I'd like to call to order the... Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on September 1st, 2015. I want to call a meeting to order and invite you to stand if you choose.
Our blessed heavenly Father, we thank you for this another day that you've given us. We ask that you continue to bless this community in our efforts this day to consider the businesses brought before us. As we go through tonight's meeting, dear Lord, we just ask that you give us the leadership, the wisdom that we need in order to be able to make the decisions that are fair to this community and will lead it on to greater positions. All this we ask in Jesus' name and for His precious and holy sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Commissioner Hall-Hill, sorry.
Here.
Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Paragon. Mayor Wilkerson.
I might have a... First want to recognize Bobby Joe Sexton on her retirement on September 1st. She was a city central coordinator at Neighborhood and Community Services. Evers?
Oh.
I knew baby, 61 years ago, so happy birthday, Rick.
It's tomorrow, but that's... Yeah, thank you.
Close enough.
Close enough. Thank you, yeah.
All right, we'll have another recognition shortly when... DeFebbe, do you have any...
Thank you, Mayor. There'll be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reason. I just noticed that you know when you're communicating when the red light comes on. That's pretty cool. Kate?
Pursuant to KRS 61810C for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against your on behalf of the city.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
No, Mayor.
Approval of the minute, August 18, 2015.
Second. Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Public... Second reading, 2015.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 2.70 acres from PUD, Planned Unit Development, to RS 1D, Single Family Residential, located at Chipewa Drive, presently owned by D&amp;D Contracting Group Incorporated.
Second reading.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Second reading, 2015.
Ordinance naming street. Ordinance approving the naming of an unnamed alley connecting East 7th Avenue to East 8th Avenue between Chestnut Street and Park Street to BG 262 Alley.
Second.
Call roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Second reading of ordinance, 2015.
Ordinance naming street. Ordinance approving the naming of an unnamed alley connecting East 7th Avenue to East 8th Avenue between Chestnut Street and Park Street to BG 262 Alley.
Second.
Call roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Second reading of ordinance, 2015.
Ordinance naming street. Ordinance approving the naming of an unnamed alley connecting East 7th Avenue to East 8th Avenue between Chestnut Street and Park Street to BG 262 Alley.
Second.
Call roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
2015.
Municipal order approving the career path advancement of Dee Cameron Carver to the position of Operations Technician One in the Public Works Department. Second.
Second by Par...
Thank you, Mayor. In the Public Works Department, we provide for our employees a career path advancement in the Operations Division. How it works is a person is hired generally as labor and works their way through what is known as the books of skill. And they train and become more valuable and have a good attendance and work record. And as a result, we promote them to the next level of skill, which is Operation Tech One. Mr. Carver has gone through those books and is recommended tonight for that advancement. I believe he's here tonight.
Order.
You need to talk to the line up there. We have no control over whether the mic is on or off. So if you don't see red, that's a bomb. I don't see color, so I do my best.
Congratulations. Any discussion? Call roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
One of the ongoing commitments the city and the police department has made is to the use of in-car cameras. We're here tonight to ask you to allow the police department to purchase 35 new cameras, to retrofit 20 existing cars, as well as a bevy of 15 in newer vehicles. We have the money, and Doug is here if you have any questions.
Please call roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order, 2015, 156.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of in-car cameras for the Police Department from Coban Technologies Incorporated of Houston, Texas, and the purchase of related equipment in the amount not to exceed $157,500.
Second.
Second by Will.
One of the ongoing commitments the city and the Police Department has made is to the use of in-car cameras. We're here tonight to ask you to allow the Police Department to purchase 35 new cameras, to retrofit 20 existing cars, as well as a bevy of 15 in newer vehicles. We have the money, and Doug is here if you have any questions.
Please call roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
2015.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2016-02 for Coban in-car camera expansion project from Cornerstone Information Systems of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, in the amount of $26,922.70.
Second.
Having the cameras is only one part of the solution. The cameras need to, using wireless technology, send its images to a server. In order to do that, we have to install certain software. And install the software, we have to have local talent. We're here tonight to ask you to approve a contract with JBK, a Bowling Green provider, to install the connective tissue between the cameras and the server. Again, Doug is here if you need a more detailed explanation.
Questions?
Municipal order... Oops, sorry. Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Order, 2015.
Municipal order approving the continuation of an agreement with Western Kentucky University for providing a leaf composting system for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky. Second.
By Hill, second.
One of the great services that citizens know we provide is removal of leaves in the community. This is coming up here in the next couple of months. We collect about 1,300 tons of leaf leaves a year. One option would be to take those to landfill. Another option would be for us to process those leaves into compost. The process we have vetted over a number of years is to partner with WKU. They provide a composting center. We pay a fee for service of $45,900. That's been fairly static with one change back in, I think, 212. We also enjoy 25% of the revenue. We were asked a number of years ago to look at the efficacy of this arrangement, and I think Jeff has looked to that and has provided you memos in the past outlining what we believe is a good operation. We recommend approval.
Call roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order, 2015.
Municipal order approving the submission of the fiscal year 2015, Section 8 Management Assessment Program Certification for the Housing Choice Voucher Program.
The city receives money from HUD for what's known as Section 8 certificate or housing choice vouchers. HUD, in its wisdom, wants us to do what is essentially a self-evaluation of how we do that, sending that self-evaluation on to HUD, in which they grade us. For the last 10 out of 11 years, we've been a high performer in our operation. We again think that we will be a high performance. We're here tonight to basically certify Brent's work that will go on to HUD.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Order, 2015.
Municipal order authorizing the sale of approximately 0.99 acre of city-owned surplus property located at 707 East Main Avenue and the adjacent property located on 10th Avenue, and approving an amended and restated real estate sale and purchase agreement with Gemini Homes Incorporated. Second.
DeFebbe?
Since we do not need to be a landowner without a purpose, we had some surplus land behind 707 East Main. The commission, based on staff recommendation, went out to an RFP. We had a number of proposals. Gemini Homes first came to one our consideration and was going to build five homes on the property. There's some additional land that was not part of the original bid, but they shown an interest in adding another home. We went back and used a fair market value, and we're here tonight to ask you to basically amend the agreement, selling the additional small acreage to Gemini to allow them to put one more additional home, which will be good for the neighborhood and good for us. Brent's here if you would like a more thorough explanation.
Questions?
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
2015.
Municipal order authorizing and approving revisions to the Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan for the city's Housing Choice Voucher Program. Second.
In addition to the CMAP, our self-evaluation, we also have to present an administrative plan, how we're going to use the Section 8 or housing choice vouchers. This plan requires revisions when we choose to make those. We're here tonight to entertain one of the revisions that Brent and his staff feel is important for us to have a timely and effective program. I'd like to ask Brent to present his recommendation to you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, Commissioners. In 2013, we did a large amendment to the administrative plan. The administrative plan is really our operating policy for how we operate the program. And the way it's laid out is HUD says you will have policies on these things. So we have to write a policy on those things. Some things they will say, this is your policy for these items. The one that I'm bringing for you tonight is one that we just have to have a policy. It is not HUD language. It's a local option. And as we move forward, after our large rewrite in 2013, we're constantly evaluating our policy to look for other opportunities to serve the public. We've got two that we're looking at, one before you tonight, and another one that we think is going to take us some time to draft out, and it has to do with homeless preferences. So I wanted to separate the two to go ahead and bring this one forward, bring the homeless preference one at a later date once we have that complete. So the one tonight is really talking about changing in household size. So I want to explain what that means. That means you are an existing tenant, you have a Section 8 voucher, and you want to expand your household. Under current policy, you could only expand your household if you got married or had a child. That was the only expansion to your household that you could do. Now, keep in mind, if you apply, there are no restrictions on that. You can apply for multiple people to live with you. And I'll put this into perspective for you. If you have a voucher and your child goes away to college, you can decide to leave that child in the household or take them out of the household because they went away to college or living in a dorm, they're doing whatever. Now that child finishes college or quits college, whatever, now you can't add that child back to the household. That'd be the same as if your child moved out and you took him out of the household. You couldn't add him back in. What this allows is someone to add their child back in. The other part of this is the marriage part. Not all of it is tied to marriage. So we've opened it up to allow boyfriend, girlfriend, fiance. So that could be someone who intends to be married or they're not married currently. We restricted it to that type of relationship. We didn't open it up to cousin, brother, those types of relationships. We kept it to an actual relationship. And there's a couple of things, a couple of ways to look at this. Economically, if we add someone else, another adult, to the household, we get to count their income. If we count their income, that reduces how much rent we pay. So that's a cost savings measure to us. Administratively, we wanted to be consistent with if you come in and apply for a voucher and you're a boyfriend, girlfriend, fiance, whatever, unmarried couple, you can apply as that, but you can't add as that. So we wanted to make those two consistent administratively. HUD, over the last several years, has continued to cut our funding, so we've made changes to our program, to our policy, so that we can continue to operate the program financially. Couple of years ago, we instituted the minimum rent. We've been working on our portability. Portability is where someone has a voucher from us and then moves to another jurisdiction. Well, depending on where you move to, the rents will be different. We had one that was in the DC area. We were paying $1,800 a month in rent. I worked for about six months with the local housing agency there to get them to absorb it, so we didn't have to continue to pay that cost. So that $1,800 then came off our books. We have to constantly look for ways to make this affordable for the program. Yes, we have 606 vouchers. That's 72, 72 a year, 606 times 12. We also only have so much money to do it in, so we have to balance our number of vouchers with the amount of money that we have available to spend on our program. So we're actually working in two piles as we go throughout the year. This was a recommendation by myself and Alvera, our housing coordinator. We felt it worthy to bring for you as a policy change for the reasons that I said, economically and administratively. And I'll entertain any questions anyone might have. Please.
You stated that... Part of the...
Mm-hmm. If there is no income, then there would be no change. Yeah, if there is no income. We have...
Even though the size of the family is now bigger?
Well, there wouldn't be an increase in bedroom size because there's a relationship there. So it wouldn't be an impact of an increase in cost to us. About 90% of our families have some type of income, and that changes, that's all over the board. You know, I'm not saying that they all have full-time jobs, but most do have some level of income. So we would assume that there would be income coming in as part of the addition to the household.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
When does this... Opportunity to recognize you probably embarrassed to our attention. Paragon, so I'm hurt to read.
Hey, Tyler's grandfather, Mr. George Peterson, and his dad, bringing this to our attention, and it's a really, really big deal for Bowling Green. It seems that we are... Our athleticism is getting us national and international attention. So this certificate of celebration is presented to Tyler Peterson. Congratulations for your first-place finish in the World Champion Rally Super Stock Division of the All-American Soapbox Derby. Your hard work and dedication in this sport has made you the first competitor from Kentucky in history to take the title. Congratulations again on your win, and thank you for your dedication to Bowling Green through volunteerism. And I'd like to maybe invite Tyler to come on up and get a group picture with the mayor and the commissioners with his certificate. Thank you, Tyler. Congratulations.
Tyler, I'm here. One second. Sorry, camera's not operating fast, I wanted to. Thank you.
Tyler, is it... There were three winners, correct, this year?
Yes, ma'am. Kelsey Settles was the Rally Masters winner, and then Lucas Ramey was the Rally Stock winner.
All from Kentucky and the first ever. So Kentucky swept the whole entire world champion of this sport, so...
In the rally side of it. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you for letting... The first read.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 0.99 acre of property located at 5609 Scottsville Road with property presently owned by trustees of Broadway United Methodist Church Incorporated, and said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
Second by D...
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Order, 2015.
Municipal order approving an amendment to the On-Call Wrecker Rotation Service Agreement for the Bowling Green Police Department.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. The Bowling Green Police Department provides oftentimes the first initiation for towing service. In doing so, it's a responsibility that we take seriously, so we have an agreement that have rules of engagement, including payment for that service. We'd like to amend that every so often. Last year, as you commissioner members, we went through some changes in our towing. Doug was asked to make some recommendations. He's here tonight to tersely outline those for you.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe, Mayor and Commissioners. As Mr. DeFebbe said tersely, I will address this quickly. The changes to our ordinance, or sorry, the agreement that the City, the Bowling Green Police Department's been operating on for a number of years for wrecker services, we're asking to make some minor changes. I think Gene Harmon went through this. You'll notice in your copy, there is some underlying sections. Those are the legalistic changes that Gene has recommended. The section that I have recommended deals with the fees. We updated our fee structure. We did get some input from wrecker companies with this, and I know that you all may have received a copy of a letter from some of our local wrecker services requesting a certain fee level. What you'll notice in, by comparison, the fees that I have recommended yet to be approved really mirror those that are already existing in our Wrecker City Wrecker ordinance. We thought it was important to have that consistency. I know that the letter from the wrecker services asked for a slightly higher storage fee. That's certainly within your purview to make those changes, and we will incorporate them into our wrecker service agreement. But the fees, and I can go into them individually if you have any questions, but they, as recommended, coincide exactly with the already established city fees for wrecker service charging under our companion city ordinance for wrecker services. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those, but we think this creates consistency with those fees across the board.
Call at the same...
It is. They're providing a service to the city through this agreement at our request.
What does it cost if a policeman is out there and called for a wrecker in the city limits, of course? What is the cost?
Under the recommendation...
Oh, presently?
I'd have to go back and look at the old fees, but I think it's maximum, or it's limited to $75, I think, is the top fee they could charge.
Over to...
Up to $125 maximum fee, which is the same fee that the city ordinance outlines. They were okay with that fee for the wrecker. The difference that they were recommending was storage fees. They wanted a higher daily storage fee. I think our ordinance limits that to $25 a day, and they're asking for more than that. And I have a copy of their letter. I can reference that if you need to know exactly what they've asked for. But they're okay with 100, the maximum $125 towing for a standard fee, but they're asking for a $35 a day outside storage fee and a $45 a day inside storage fee, where I think our ordinance and my recommendation both cap that at $25 a day.
$25 for a regular truck?
Uh-huh.
Private towing ordinance now is 25.
That's correct.
These will... Did he be paying these or they pay them?
It is typically an insurance company that pays the fees or the private citizen that pays the fees if they don't have insurance to cover the need for that towing. But if it's a wreck, typically insurance companies. If your car's broken down, then the private citizen would pay.
But one caveat, we would pay if the police department actually asked for it to be impounded as part of a crime or something like that. The city would pay that.
Yeah, we would periodically, but when they would be providing that service for us at our request, then we would expect to pay those fees.
Question, comment?
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
First reading of 2015.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 17 Personnel Policies of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances to create a new subchapter relating to a Workforce Recruitment and Outreach Committee.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's our goal as an organization to have a workforce that reflects the demographic minority, majority makeup of our community. In preemptive response to the incentives provided us by the Department of Justice, we felt that the first step in responding to that challenge would be to ask our community to engage with us, to help us get input about how best we can do that. We have vetted this through staff with the commission, and we felt that the first step was, in essence, to ask the community. We're here today to entertain a ordinance that creates a Workforce Recruitment and Outreach Committee that has seven members.
as part of a crime, or something like that.
Yeah, we would periodically, but when they would be providing that service for us at our request, then we would expect to pay those fees.
Question coming?
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
First reading of 2015.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances, ordinance amending Chapter 17 Personnel Policies of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances to create a new subchapter relating to a workforce recruitment and outreach committee.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. It's our goal as an organization to have a workforce that reflects the demographic minority, majority makeup of our community. In preemptive response to the incentives provided us by the Department of Justice, we felt that the first step in responding to that challenge would be to ask our community to engage with us, to help us get input about how best we can do that. We have vetted this through staff with the Commission, and we felt that the first step was, in essence, to ask the community. We're here today to entertain an ordinance that creates a workforce recruitment and outreach committee that has seven members. Those will be appointed by the mayor, recommended by the mayor, and appointed by y'all. That would have two-year terms, and they would essentially serve three purposes. They would help us in our recruitment effort, provide a dual level of communication between the city and minority community, and minority community to the city, primarily the police and fire departments, as well as, when necessary, to provide assistance to us in oral boards interviews. Where this provides a framework to start that process. I'll stop. Bruce is the sponsor, and he can add what he likes.
First in long line of... Government and... All I have to say. Comments or questions? Color roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of 2015.
Ordinance approving amended interlocal cooperation agreement. Ordinance approving amended interlocal cooperation agreement with Warren County and Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority Incorporated, related to the WKU Gateway to Downtown Bowling Green Development Area Tax Increment Financing District Block 6 rap.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Wade.
I think there's a general feeling that the TIF is back on track, and we're here to partner with the ITA, ITA, sorry, with the TIF Board and the county to develop the agreements necessary to continue that obvious progress. I think it'd be helpful if Gene Harmon and Scott Backer, Scott represents the TIF Board, and Gene, obviously, with the city. Gene, Scott?
Okay. Will and Scott can speak as well. This is kind of just a simple ordinance change, or interlocal change, tonight. As everybody knows, we've agreed that the county will issue $30 million in new industrial revenue bonds to complete the rap, pay off the contractors, and finish it. It's anticipated that that will be paid with TIF revenues that we've all pledged, we've set out, and we'll have some additional documents in the next few weeks to bring back to you. There's, if there ever was concern about a shortfall in payment, the interlocal agreement set out what would have happened. The garage right now would be the kind of backstop for that, but the authority owns the garage under the existing agreement that we approved already a couple of weeks ago. The authority would lease the garage to the county, who would then lease it to a company created by Mr. Katzoff. He would then sublease that back to the city in a GO lease agreement, in which we, our lease payments then would be the, any amounts of shortfall in the debt payment for that year. Of course, everybody hopes, anticipates with the pledged revenues, it won't be a shortfall, but if there was, that was why the arrangement's in place, that we would agree to do that. At the same time, the county also agreed to the city that if there is a shortfall, we would agree to reimburse you for any money you paid. In the original agreement, that was set out in another sublease from the city back to the county on the same garage. After we did that, there was a little bit of discussion about, well, is that confusing? Because basically, Warren County is leasing the same garage twice. So based upon the parties kind of sitting and talking about that, Jeff and I sat in on a couple of meetings with the authority and with the county. It was decided that maybe there's a better way of doing that, instead of having Warren County lease the same garage twice. So under the new arrangement, everything else still stays in place. The county leases the garage to the county, the authority to the county, the county to Mr. Katzoff's company, who then subleases it to the city under our GO lease. Our lease payments will be any shortfall in debt payment. At that point, the garage issue stops. What happens now, the county has agreed to substitute another parcel of property they own, which is the Weldon Peak Park. They will transfer title of that property to the authority, who will then lease it to the city under a nominal of a dollar a year charge, or whatever that lease payment. The city will then sublease that park back to Warren County. Our sublease payments then will be any money that the city is obligated to pay under this arrangement, be getting the same reimbursement that they did before with the garage. We're substituting Weldon Peak Park instead for the garage. We've talked to bond counsel, and I think everybody is okay with that concept. In essence, the only thing we're doing is substituting the park for the garage, so the county's not leasing the same property twice. If that makes sense. And Scott can jump in and say anything else he needs to say.
I'm not sure it makes sense, but that's what we've hit upon, is the mechanism to accomplish what everybody had already agreed. As a practical matter, the responsibility for the park will remain the county's. We're just going to have agreements in place that makes it look like the park's moving around, but as a practical matter, the park will remain a county park. It will not be the responsibility of the city. You're not taking on any sort of insurance or any other liability or responsibility for that. This just gives us a funding mechanism that's going to have to be renewed every year, so that the city remains assured that the county will continue to backstop the obligations on these bonds. So it does look better than doing the parking garage back and forth. So this was the substitute that seems to pass muster with everyone.
Comments or que...
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
First reading of 2015.
Ordinance relating to property tax rates. Ordinance setting 2015 property tax rates, franchise tax rates, and improvement assessment rates, and setting forth guidelines for payment, penalty, and interest.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance requires an explanation. At 7 o'clock, there will be a public hearing to have the public ask any questions about the tax rates. Jeff plans to explain those at 7 o'clock. Normally, that meeting happens at 4:30. We, like you, are getting used to the change from a 7 o'clock meeting to a 4:30 meeting. In our diligence to get this in the paper, there might have been a cutting pace that had the 7 o'clock. Gene and Kate, and myself and Jeff felt there was no need to abrogate action. So we're asking you to do the first reading of the property tax rate. Allow Jeff, who can do it by himself, along with Kate, to, at 7 o'clock, hear any comments, which we don't expect any. And then we would have the second reading at the next meeting. Jeff is here tonight, and right now, to explain to you the parts of this ordinance, and to give you a relief that there is no tax increase. Jeff?
Are recommending that we keep the same tax rate for 2015 for real estate and personal property, and put in your chairs just a copy of what I would cover at the public hearing. We got our assessments from the PVA a few weeks ago. Let me back up. We advertised in the paper by mistake that the public hearing would be at 7 o'clock, but that advertisement did take place in accordance with KRS two times on August 21st and August 25th. The fact that we are setting a rate between what they call a compensating rate and the 4% growth rate requires us to have a public hearing. So even though we're not making any changes, the public hearing's required, so we're going to go ahead and do that at 7 o'clock. Just a few comments. We had 3.2% total growth in property values from last year, from 2014. Went from 4.1 billion to 4.3 billion. That is billion, as in B, and not million. And so that 3.2% represents about $136 million in growth. And what we do is we break that down between existing growth and new growth, and you'll see in your following pages, the existing growth was about 72.1 million, or 1.7% from last year. And then the other piece, the 1.5%, which would get you to the 3.2, is about 63.9 million in growth in new property. So our rate we're proposing for 2015 again is .206, which is the same as 2014. And actually, this rate hasn't changed since 2008, so this is our eighth year in a row keeping that same real estate property tax rate. We feel that this rate will allow us to meet the budget that we set back in June without any problems. And just a few things I want to remind anyone listening is that, you know, our bills go out in October for persons owning property in the city. You do have a city and a county bill here, if you live in the city. So those are due on December 31st, and if they're not postmarked and paid by then, there is a 10% penalty, that's per KRS, that takes effect January 1st. Anyone with mortgage accounts will receive a copy of their bill as well, directly from the city, but they are to check with their mortgage company and see if those bills get paid. And if anyone does not receive a copy of their bill by November 1st, we ask that they call our office at 393-3000. So I'll answer any questions. Like I said, most of this would be covered in the public hearing at 7 o'clock, so I don't wish that upon any of you to stay. We can definitely handle that at 7 o'clock, so that's all I have. One more comment is that, of course, people don't realize that if they live in the city school district, that portion of their, that they're paying for city school tax is on the city tax bill. And the city school tax rate did go up for 2015, as well as the county schools, which the county schools gets applied on the county tax bill. But the city school rate did go to 75.6 cents per hundred, and I think it was at 73 point something percent last year. So those owning those properties in the city school district, which is mainly the downtown area, you would see that line on your tax bill increase slightly, but that is not, again, the city tax, so...
City of Bowling Green rollover the...
Right, that's...
... taxing... Contract with us to put it on our tax bill.
Like their taxes for...
And 2007, our property tax rate was 24.9 cents per hundred. We lowered it that year to compensate city taxpayers, property taxpayers, for the county raising theirs for the library tax that they instituted at that time, and we've not had an increase in below those many years. Jeff?
Our comment is, when and if, or if and when, our existing property does grow above 4%, that will require us to lower our rate, so that's something we'll have to watch out for.
Color roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
September 5, 2015.
Mayor, no vote.